Consists of 23 acres, so what we're looking to do is annex in 38 acres. The remaining property would, three acres would be a right-of-way donation, and then there would be some that's retained by PLODI. That would be the extent of the annexation. In addition to the annexation agreement, we would be looking at a development agreement, which is the, an exhibit to the annexation agreement. The development agreement would kick in once we were able to either A, expand the existing Dundee crossings tip, or B, create a new tip. And that's going to depend on the state statutes and what qualification criteria we can meet for amending the tip. We'd also be looking at amending the business district, the downtown and Dundee crossings, BDD. And so, the development agreement includes an incentive package that's approximately $2 million and would consist of 60% of a tip rebate, of tip revenue that's generated by the subject property, and 100% rebate of BDD with no cap in place. However, we estimate that the rebate in total would be about $2 million. Part of that would be to reimburse the developer for site acquisition, but also the repaving of Pamani Drive and the cost to annex in and create the tip and the BDD. So there's consulting fees, and the village is looking to hire Vanderwall Consulting because they were the consultants who prepared the original tip and the original BDD. So, there'll be these three separate motions. One will be for the annexation of the whole parcel, which includes the development agreement. And then we're also asking for, to approve the actual annexation. And then we're approving for a motion to direct the village administrator to proceed with either amending the tip, creating a new tip, and amending the BDD. So those are the three motions in place. And if the board were to approve this, this would also then be on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda for rezoning to an M1 and for variances that have been requested. And that has all been scheduled for June 4th pending the village board approvals. At this time, I'll turn it over to PLODI for their comments.
Thank you, Jennifer, the entire board, and village president. Appreciate everybody coming together on this time. My name, my name is David PLODI with PLODI Companies, specifically on his property, PLODI Investments. It's really a neat time for this project to be coming through a little bit of a challenge. But everyone has risen to the occasion through all the COVID and distancing, and I really appreciate that. The neat thing for myself was my father started doing business with Caterpillar back in the early 60s. And to fast forward, that was with Patent Tractor, which now Al Toffler's taken that company and boarded out another family company, which I'm going to introduce Derek Al Toffler, who's the president of Al Toffler Caterpillar. And he could say a little bit more about his company. But back to my excitement about this is to bring Caterpillar to East Dundee is just a huge win, win-win, I think, on all sides. And this is taking place on a piece of ground that we weren't really actively marketing. It probably wasn't going to come to market for some time in case it was going to have to be staging area for what was going, what continues to be our mining operation. And it actually complements the mining operation by its use, which is for Caterpillar heavy equipment, sales, and operation. You're also going to hear briefly from Ken Ninehouse, who's with Northern Builders, who's going to speak to the building that's going up. Any other questions? Part of my team, Kevin C., VP of Development for PLODI Investments is here, as well as Ryan Tradie. So Dave Hickson, the VP of Product Support and Marketing for Al Toffler, is also on the line and been very involved throughout the entire planning and building development process for this project. So with that, I would just turn it over to Derek Al Toffler to let us know where Al Toffler's coming from in Caterpillar. Derek?
Thanks, David. Good evening, everyone. As you mentioned, I'm Derek Al Toffler. Appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about our business here tonight and for your consideration of this project with East Dundee. For those that aren't that familiar with Caterpillar, they're a 95-year-old manufacturer of various products such as earth-moving equipment, bulldozers, excavators, as well as engines and electric power products. Our company is a dealership for Caterpillar products, and we sell rent and support these products with public and private customers. As David mentioned, we are a family-owned business. We started back in 1957 when my grandfather signed the first sales and service agreement. We're based in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, as well. As he mentioned as well, in 2018, we were able to expand into the northern Illinois territory with the acquisition of Patent Cat. This included Chicago and two counties in northwest Indiana as well. And since then, is really the catalyst for us getting to know the PLODI family and the PLODI Companies. Been a pleasure. Because of them, we really started learning about East Dundee and this property. As David mentioned, it was not listed or marketed at all. But as we learned more about the location, more about your village, everything about it really lined up to what we were looking for in a new location. So strategically for us in the region, this location fits nicely. And the people and citizens, the culture surrounding all of it also fits within what our company is all about. Definitely excited to get this far and present everything to the board tonight. Very excited for hopefully a positive outcome here. It's just been a long project in the waiting right now. But with it, you see most of the details in the packet. We're hoping to bring roughly 50 well-paying jobs to the area. The facility will also be used for vendor meetings and customer events. So we do pull from resources such as local restaurants and hospitality for these types of things. And I do think it is a win-win for all parties. I can go into definitely any details you want to. Not sure how long you want to talk about this, but feel free to ask any questions of myself or Dave Hickson as well. He's been our point person in developing this property and knows the ins and outs of the design of the facility, but also Ken Ninehouse is here as well, our designer from Northern Builders. So with that, again, really appreciate your consideration and look forward to working more with all of you.
Yeah, I have a question if I could. I think it's a great opportunity for, for everybody, especially East Dundee. I'm curious, Derek, how long was Al Toffler in Elmhurst?
Since 2008, we have specifically been operating out of that location. But Patton, I believe, has been using it since they started 80 to 85 years ago. I think they're around for that long.
So you just assumed their spot, is that how it was?
That's correct. We also assumed their facilities in Hammond, Indiana, Joliet, Oglesby, Rockford, and Wakanda.
Okay, okay. So, and 23 acres of the 38 that's being annexed into East Dundee of the PLODI land, is there any likelihood that Al Toffler will expand what you have on the boards right now?
Not as far as acreage. In the site plan, we are allotting for, I believe, roughly 20,000 square foot expansion on that 23 acres.
Okay, okay. And so, the 50 jobs that you're talking about also, you're going to obviously be moving those over from Elmhurst? Or is that going to be an additional 50 from what you got right now?
Nope, they'll be moving over from Elmhurst.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. So you probably won't be, are you going to be, plan to be expanding the headcount at all at this location?
In the immediate future, no, we'll stick with the headcount we have. And based on market conditions, we'll see how that transpires. In the long run, long-term strategy, we definitely want to grow. We feel this new location will open up, hopefully, some new customers and new customer base that we weren't doing business with in the past.
Okay. Good. The remaining questions I have are more tip-related specifics to that. Lael, Jennifer, do we want to get into that now, or should I? Hold on.
Fine, I could answer questions if you want.
Okay, well, I'm just curious if maybe we could discuss a little bit about the pros and cons, if you will, benefits, cost of amending a tip as opposed to starting the new one. If the costs, the costs of creating a new one are significant, but amending it, if what we have right now, we can't obviously extend the life of the existing tip. So if they were to go into Dundee crossings, the numbers that are talked, that are in our packet concerning the reimbursements would, I would guess, require a new tip. Because I don't know that there's enough time left on Dundee crossings to be able to, to get that much out of it. So what am I missing, or am I missing anything?
There is an analysis included in your packet, which estimates the projected tip revenue through the life of the Dundee crossings tip. And that analysis is based on the Dundee Township Assessor's opinion of what the value of the property would be. So it's, it's fairly accurate, I think it's very accurate. And it shows that, that that amount of tip revenue can be generated in the life of the tip. So creating a new tip is definitely an option. We were just trying to avoid it, given the number of tips in the village already. Our first option would be to amend it. And we're still working through what those criteria are, but anticipating that we may need to create the new tip based on eligibility report.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about whatever life is left, whatever money's, I mean, if all money's considered will be recouped in the life left on the Dundee crossings, that's great. But for the monies that will come back from the tip to the village to be spent in the tip, if that tip then is got very limited shelf life, will it restrict our ability to further develop it? And I would guess it would. And that's my concern. As opposed to starting a new tip, I mean, that puts us at 23 more years on it. And yeah, okay, some of the other governmental entities are going to probably cry foul, but they always do. So my thought is, is that that's not as big a deal.
We even, I mean, if we're talking about doing a new tip, aren't we talking about doing a tip for one lot?
Essentially, be 38 acres, which is why I'm thinking if we were going to expand it or if the possibility that they would annex further lands into it, it might behoove us to maybe try and look as far down the road as possible so as to include as much into that tip as we could now rather than have to adjust it 10, 15 years down the road.
Yeah, but Jeff, as a practical man, if, if, if expand, if expanding the tip, the current tip accomplishes our business objectives now, I don't know why we would want to create another tip and have that one already start the shot clock. When, you know, we're accomplishing what we need to for this parcel of land. And if something were to come up, you know, two, five, 10 years from now on an adjacent property, you could always create a tip then.
We could.
Without it being on the shot clock starting now. Because I mean, right now, we're just burning time if we, if we.
No, no, I understand it, Scott, and you're right. My only, my only thought is, is that creating a brand-new tip each time becomes more and more difficult, given the other governmental entities that are involved and the cost involved with it is maybe something we'd be able to avoid. It's not insignificant. And so, you know, if we knew that there was going to be other lands, I would, you know, urge maybe looking into expanding the annexation agreement to create the larger tip, if that's likely to be the case. I mean, it, I know, I mean, we can go ahead and create one now, and that's not a problem, but if we have to create another one five years, 10 years down the road to accommodate the expansion of that land, you know, it, it, it's a difficult process. You know, I mean, all the other, all the other governmental entities that are involved in this, the school districts especially, tend to bark at it. And if we were to do another one right on top of this one, you know, it may be a little more difficult than it has been in the past, so.
If I can suggest here, Jeff, I would just leave this in Jennifer's capable hands and assure you that she is competent and will be able to make the numbers work, whichever way works within the law.
No, I know, I don't question that, I'm just trying to.
We might be forced to create a new tip by the law, you know, so.
Either way, that will make the numbers work.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, and so then also, the, the cat property then does not include connecting Pamani Drive up to the back of that lot along 72 then? I mean, it does for just construction purposes, but that's not going to be a permanent road as, as far as the development goes? Is that correct?
Were you asking about Pamanti Drive connecting to Route 72?
Yeah, because we're talking about putting it together kind of on a temporary basis for construction purposes and access purposes. I'm just wondering if, is it, we are definitely not, or no one's looking to make that a permanent access road then?
The, yes, the access would be a temporary access from 25 onto Pamanti until permanent access has been granted off of 72 onto what would be the new Christina Drive. Feel free, anyone, Joe, to step in and correct me if I'm not accurate.
You're correct, Jennifer. We're, we're fairly close with gaining access from IDOT for the construction interest. But I think Pamanti is just going to bridge that gap until we get that access permit. And we do look at getting our full permit from IDOT later this summer to be able to make all the improvements, including Route 72. So we won't require, we're only going to require Pamanti for a short time.
If I could, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the building.
Sure.
So you guys are, you actually sell the tractors that Caterpillar makes? You also service them, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you've got the main building, which is like, it looks like it has service bays in there, so it's like a garage for, for doing the service work. You've got this other smaller building, what's the purpose of that building?
So when equipment comes in to be repaired, we take it to that other building, which has a wash facility. And then in that also are a couple of bays. One is for welding and fabrication, and one is for testing, component testing.
Is there a reason why that's done in a separate facility?
Only we, to keep the main shop facility under one roof with the square footage we need for the amount of volume that we're seeing, that we expect to see. And we also have contamination control guidelines that when we do component work inside of the main shop, we want some of those dirtier jobs to be done in the different facilities so we don't get contamination to our components.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of wondering about. You know, there's not, I don't know, you're saying you're welding and you're cleaning. It's not an issue that's going to come up where there's going to be some, some fumes or something that are spreading around the area or anything like that we would have to worry about, right?
No, not at all, nothing abnormal. We are facilitating all the necessary oil-water separator systems and everything by code.
The, the planning for the facility right now also allows the, the main building to expand by bays as, as more business grows. It would be kind of an impediment to have that attached and disassemble it or work it around it. It's planned right now so the growth can, can happen without being impeded. If you notice the addition that's planned for the facility. It's kind of an auxiliary use and makes, makes sense to keep it independent.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you like an overview of the project, or do you have any other questions?
Well, I do see your plans in here, so, I mean, I, I think for now, that's all I was wondering.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I had, I had a question, are we premature on the landscaping? Any kind of a landscaping plan? Or vetting, being able to vet that? I see that there is on some of the renderings, some landscaping along 72.
Ms. Mahoney, we, we have quite an extensive landscape plan. It is in your pocket, I'm sorry, in your packet, rather. There's a lot of landscaping at the front of the property along Route 72, just south of Pond. Christina Drive is landscaped, there's considerable amount of trees along at the south, south property, which would be a future, future drive if that is connected later on, along with a lot of substantial planting in the front of the property. There's a second supplementary page, just, just, just addressing that, that part, parts of the property.
Okay, so the page, your, your, your numbers are probably different than my packet, but directly after the elevations?
I'm not sure where they put it. There are two landscape plans, L101 and L102. L101 is the main landscape plan, which shows all the plantings, the trees, bushes. The enhancement of that is on the second sheet, which has blowups on the foundation, buildings in the front of the building and the.
Okay.
Et cetera.
Okay.
I don't think we got a full set of the plans.
So those renderings are accurate or, or reflective of what your plans are? It's not just pretty?
Yeah, they reflect what's intended. This has been submitted to the village consultant, Joe Hein, and him and Downton Landscape Architects worked on this plan collectively.
Okay.
The landscaping plans, Trustee Mahoney and the rest of the village board, you don't have the detailed landscaping plan. They will be asking for one landscaping waiver, which is the, Joe, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's the not having a landscaping island every 10 spaces, which is a waiver that's been requested in the past. So that will come back to the village board. It is not a planning and zoning item, but it will come back to the village board with the planning and zoning variances as an item for discussion. But that specific landscaping plan is not in your packet.
Okay.
Because the waiver will be considered separately.
Got it, got it, yeah, I did see the islands in the, in the, in the parking area.
Joe, are there any other waivers that are, are being requested for landscaping?
I, I believe that's the only one, I, I think that only occurs one time where we run into 11 stalls instead of the 10.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Catherine, we call her all.
Trustee Linum.
Sorry, yes.
Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonty.
Yes.
And President Miller.
Yes. Very good, that takes us to item C on our new business, if we can get a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance annexing certain property owned by Chicago Title Land Trust Company, trust number 8002350432. The Chicago Title Land Trust Company, trust number 8002350431. South side of Illinois Route 72 in the vicinity of Christina Drive.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Catherine? Catherine, you want to take a roll?
Trustee Linum. Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonty.
Yes.
President Miller.
Yes, very good. And then if we can have an item on motion D and wrap this up?
I'll make a motion to approve a motion directing the village administrator to proceed with the processes to incorporate the Al Toffler CAT development and PLODI property into a tax increment financing district and business development district as described.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
President Miller. Just for clarification, I'm sorry, the wording on the agenda wasn't 100% accurate. It's not, just for the record, let this reflect, it's not a motion to approve a motion, it's just a motion to approve, to direct, so.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify that.
Or amended. Can we approve the motion though first? I don't know.
It was the motion amended, we have the second amended.
I do have, oh, sorry.
Discussion?
Well, I do have one question and why it is we need to consult with Vanderwall on an eligibility report where it seems like that is tip work that can be done by our attorneys. You know, what is it that they know that the attorney doesn't? It seems to me like, you know, it's a needless expense, or at least avoidable.
Jeff, I can, I can weigh in on this, this is Greg Smith. When it comes to qualifications of areas for inclusion within a tip district or a business development district, statutes have a series of factual findings that can be proven by looking at numbers relating to assessments and things like that. Other items, excuse me, are relating to matters of expert opinion that come within the experience of land planners that's outside of the realm of legal counsel. It is rare and not typical for a village attorney to conduct an eligibility study because ultimately, if push comes to shove, the author of that report has to be the key witness in court to testify about it. And you could imagine that a land planner like Vanderwall and Associates has a bench of land planners, would be more fit to support the opinions as opposed to an attorney who can understand the tip act but doesn't have the land planning background. So Kleinfur and Jenkins and most of our peers in the municipal law field do not conduct these studies ourselves and instead refer clients to people like Vanderwall or other land planners to produce those opinions.
Great answer. Thank you. Okay, any more discussion on D? Catherine?
Trustee Linum.
Yes.
Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonty.
Yes.
Very good, so all three, all four motions have, or three motions regarding this have passed. I want to thank Dave PLODI and PLODI Company for being such a pleasure to work with during these difficult times. And I want to welcome the Al Toffler family to East Dundee. We could not be more proud to have you as a partner in our community. And I look forward to working with you in the future. We will make everything go as expeditiously and smoothly as we possibly can. We know you're under the gun with time on this. And I just want to say again, welcome. We could not be more proud to have Caterpillar in East Dundee. And this is going to be a lifelong relationship that we build with you guys, so.
Thank you.
Welcome, and I know it's the whole board and the village by saying that this is, we need a rainbow at the end of this tunnel here, and you guys are it, so. Welcome to town.
Yeah, thank you very much, we're looking forward to it.
Very good. We will not feel disappointed if you guys bail on the meeting here. We got a couple other things to talk about, but I want to thank you all for showing up and being available to talk to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
All right, next up on our agenda is item E, which is a motion to approve an ordinance for outdoor dining. If we could have a motion on this, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting and approving the outdoor dining regulations in Executive Order 20-4 issued by the village president under a declaration of a state of emergency, COVID-19, May 27, 2020.
Second.
Very good, discussion on this? Catherine?
Trustee Linum.
Yes.
Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
I'm really sorry. I missed it. Uh, one question.
Yeah.
There's a little map in the packet that shows like a grid pattern of all these tables.
Yep.
What is that? Is that the street? We're closing Downriver Street or is that?
Okay, so what we wanted to do, and I'll just explain this as, as quickly as I can. Jennifer and I had been working on guidance for the restaurants and the bars, uh, prior to Friday's openings. And unfortunately, even though I've been pushing for it, the governor didn't come up with their guidance until sometime late on Sunday afternoon. So we scrambled as fast as possible to try and make as much room available for our businesses in the case that they needed it. Initially, we talked about two things. One was closing down the street. One was using the depot grounds. Um, the drawing that you're looking at, I believe, is the one that was talking about the street. However, having gone back and talked to all our restaurants prior to Friday, none of them deemed it necessary because they all had adequate seating. So. Consider that drawing a relic.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my vote is yes.
Good. Okay, that takes us through the brunt of our agenda. Financial reports you have in your packet. The only report I have tonight is God, what a strange world we live in and let's just get through tonight and we'll see it on the other side. We'll go on board real quick here and see if anybody's got anything. Trustee Coonsey?
I have no report.
Trustee Stella.
No report.
Trustee Andreessen.
No report, but I would just ask Chief Carpenter to maybe weigh in on some of the things that have been happening nationally and. To a lesser degree locally and, you know, I guess our preparedness for staying.
Thank you for that question. Uh, my life has been dominated, of course, by what's occurring in our country and throughout our state. And we do have. Two of our officers have been engaged with regional teams. Uh, they've been deployed in Aurora the last couple of nights. But I think it looks to me like this isn't going to end. Anytime soon and I need our guys back, so probably, uh, starting tomorrow, I'll bring them back. We've had a lot of anxiety, I think everywhere, but including in East Dundee. Lot of phone calls, a lot of text messages. I'm talking with business owners and residents. Who, you know, are just concerned and plus the rumor mills are working full time and we have to rebut that. People are hearing that businesses in town are being looted and ransacked. Nothing could be further from the truth. We've had no problems whatsoever. But there is social media that occasionally mentions a, a destination in East Dundee. In fact, a seventeen-year-old East Dundee high school student actually posted a, a very alarming message involving. Carpentersville the other day. He's been arrested by them and he will be petitioned to juvenile court because what he said was utterly foolishness. And, um. You know, we've had some things to be anxious about, but we put the police over there like by the old Walmart and, um. And a social media. Post, uh, never materialized. So, so we're, we're chasing ghosts is what it comes down to. And that, that's a good way to be considering the alternative.
Now, if, if something were to arise in the village, you know, God forbid, and the ghost actually, you know, take on human form. Um, how, what is the village's plan for nothing else notifying the business owners? I mean, is that something we're going to throw on like the Facebook page? Is there kind of any kind of like, like, like email blast, emergency alert? I mean, how are we going to notify business owners in case? They ask me how, how, how the village is going to notify them if something comes up?
If someone.
Don't live in town.
If a specific business is mentioned, we'll make contact with the owners and talk to them.
Okay.
If there's something more widespread. Yes, we do have a system in place for, uh, it's like reverse nine-one-one. It reaches out, you know. To every, uh, every phone and, and, um. Obviously, Facebook would be involved as well.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
In fact, we did reach out to some of our downtown businesses on Sunday night due to some. Reports that we have gotten and some of them voluntarily closed. Same in West Dundee. Okay, anything else, Trustee Andreessen?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Trustee Mahoney.
Um, yes, it's been a roller coaster. A quick report, um, was able to really enjoy. Downtown at, at Mockingbird on Friday night and it was really lovely to see. The hope and the optimism. However, it was quickly dashed, um, on Saturday and the events in Chicago on Saturday as well as. A lot of the social media noise in some of the local Facebook blotters. And trying to. Determine and decipher as chief was talking about, um, the fact and the spec, in the, in, in actual. The fact of what's going on and versus actual speculation or wild rumors or rumors growing. So, um. Just trying to stay abreast of what's actually going on and then being able to communicate or. Or dismiss some of those, um, facts is when we see something like that. Um, chief, is it best to reach out to somebody in the department? Um, or you?
Yeah, absolutely. Reach out to me and I've had some residents calling. And telling me how they regret that they're, you know, bothering, bothering us with their questions. Not at all. That's what we're here for. We would rather you ask the question and allow us to answer it so you can relax.
Great.
I should also mention, Kathleen, that, uh, starting tomorrow night, we're going to be putting on an extra officer every night this week just for precaution.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, we still have Trustee Wood?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Linum.
Uh, nothing other than. I'm wondering why our warrants lists are so small. I mean, we're not spending enough money here. It's like.
We're only spending what's necessary. We're not spending anything that's not necessary.
That's good to hear.
Okay.
All right.
Did I get that everybody?
I think so.
All right. Village Administrator.
Um, I just wanted to chime in on what you were all just discussing. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to sugarcoat anything for the village board, but I also don't want to cause alarm. Um, there are threats and they may be nothing, but they may be something at some point. And I want you to understand that the resources that we rely upon. Such as the Kane County SWAT team and the mobile field force, um, which we have officers participating on. And Chief Carpenter would like to keep those officers from participating in the future if we, you know, because we, we need them. That, that they've been activated in other places. Um, and not every day, but we already know of two other municipalities. Uh, one, you know, being a, a smaller municipality that has, um, activated them. So they may not be available as we always have anticipated having those resources developed address. We have not, so. No reason to be alarmed, but also I don't want this to be sugarcoated at all. George and I have spoke many times today about this issue. Uh, we spoke at the department head level and. I also reached out to West Dundee to have a conversation with them. Because they do have, obviously they have Spring Hill Mall, um, that we're concerned about as well. So, um, I just want you all to know we'll keep you updated and we will definitely notify the businesses and we'll be active on Facebook. When the time comes, if the time comes and hopefully it doesn't come, you know. Other than that, I just want to thank everyone for helping, um, to especially Chief Carpenter for walking around and visiting all the businesses. Um, last Wednesday, um, to talk about the outdoor dining, we scrambled. Um, we're still trying to pull some pieces together, but we seem to be able to accommodate all the businesses, which was good. Um, and everyone seems happy. I also want to thank everyone who worked on the PPE distribution, including Public Works. Um, we were able to distribute all of the masks. There was a huge demand for masks and we did limit, you know, other supplies. So we have some sanitizer and we do have some wipes. With regards to PPE, we've been notified that Kane County has received ninety-two million dollars. So I do anticipate, um, some PPE coming and becoming available to residents. We are working with Metro West, um, through Metro West to try to direct where those funding dollars may go. Um, it's a, not completely known thus far, but we have heard that it will not be. Used for revenue replacement, which is what we really need. Um, unfortunately, that, that may not be. I also wanted to, um. Ask the board to please help us distribute our yard signs. So, um, if you have, uh, if you could come pick up some yard signs at the water treatment plant, we can make that available to you. And if you could hand them out or put them in your neighbor's lawn, that would be great. Uh, because we're trying to use them to send a positive message, um, during this time. Other than that, I have nothing unless someone has questions for me.
I have one.
Oh, go ahead. It's Kirsten. I'll wait.
Oh, well, I, I was just curious as to. The yard signs. I mean, we're, we're on the tail end of this whole thing and I'm not understanding really what the point of the communication is. When we come up on those signs, you got to be right on top of them to see what the message is anyway. And so. I'm, I kind of view it as an expense that didn't need to be incurred.
Hey, Jeff, you think we're at the tail end of this thing?
What?
You really think we're at the tail end of this thing?
No, no, but I mean, at least everybody knows what's going on. So, I mean, I don't know that we need to incur more expense to tell everybody again what's up. I mean. I, I, I.
We've already incurred these expenses and now it's just a matter of, um, having some people put them on their lawn. So let's leave it at that. Kirsten, did you have a question?
Yeah, my que, my comment, not a question per se, was we are opening up our streets Friday, Saturday, Sunday for. People to come out and dine in public. But we're putting signs in the yards that say stay home. It's a bit contradictory to me, so. I'm just not sure what message we're trying to send here. And I'm not, you know. I certainly understood the reason for the signage when we first had this, um, start on March thirteenth. That was definitely something we all needed to be very aware of and practicing diligently. However, at this point, if we have, if we as a village are going to be promoting outdoor dining within our village, um, amongst our residents. I'm not sure if. Continuing to put signs up that say stay home is the right thing to do. That's just my two cents, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Anything else for the administrators?
If I could speak to that just for a minute, I don't want to take too much time, but I want to, um, explain. The, the most important aspect of that sign is, is the back half, which talks about the events. So what we were trying to do is create something like the Olympics. Where as a constant reminder, as we move through summer and people are itching and upset about the event season being canceled. We remind them that we're not canceling this for good. We're not destitute and we're coming back in twenty twenty-one. So that was the, the primary purpose. The backside is, um. That's obviously not our logo, that it, or that's not our slogan. That's the theme of the COVID, reminding people to stay home. If, if I had my way, there would be no outdoor dining, but there is outdoor dining and the governor has said, you know, that it's safe to do under certain guidelines. So I think what we're, you know, the message that's out there is, is consistent because we are in a phase three. And unfortunately, everyone is saying it's reopening. It's not a reopening. We still have phase four and we have phase five. So I understand where you're coming, Trustee Wood and Trustee Linum, um, at the timing of this. But mostly because of the messages, you, you know, they are so mixed. And unfortunately, you know, it, it is what it is, but we're not trying to confuse people, but we are trying to remind them that their safety is most important. Even more important than eating out.
I understand. Thank you, Jennifer. It was just my comment. That's all.
It's, it's well taken. Thank you.
Village Attorney.
Yep, um, thank you. I just wanted to let the village board know that I'll be working with Jennifer. On Senate Bill twenty-one thirty-five that was passed last week in the abbreviated general assembly session. Uh, it, it, part of that bill include a amendments to the open meeting deck to allow for remote meetings like this to occur. If the governor has declared an emergency that includes any part of the village, such as we are under now. And if the village president finds that holding an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent, uh, because of the emergency. There's a couple of different requirements that I'll be working with Jennifer on to make sure that everyone on the village board is aware of it. Including all votes have to be by roll call. Um, the, the, a recording of the meeting has to be made and so on. But just so that you're all aware, amendments to the open meetings act have been made. Meetings like this may continue so long as the COVID disaster declarations continue from Springfield. That's it.
Yeah. Village Engineer.
No report.
Joe?
No report.
Okay. Chief, anything else that you'd like to add?
Uh, no, uh, but I appreciate your questions. Call me anytime.
Very good. Thank you. Public Works.
No report.
Building official.
No report.
All right. Anyone from finance here? Okay, that takes us to public comment on any items. Do we have anybody on the public that would like to address this board? All right, saying none, we have no executive session this evening, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, folks. Thanks again. We will see you later.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.
Hi, George.